Why don't we just call the meeting to order? Is that? Okay, okay, so here we go. Calling the meeting to order of the regular meeting of Thursday, April the 8th, 2021. And to kick it off, identification of members present.
Deidre Darrowley, Secretary.
Nay, David, alternate.
Chris Cody, Member.
Lorenzo Corio, so alternate.
Peter Phyllis, Chair. I think we got everybody, right?
Got everybody.
Okay. Approval of the minutes, have you had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Anybody, any, any issues with the minutes to discuss?
None.
Then I, I move to approve the minutes as, as presented.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of the minutes. Now, new business. And I would like to just give you a little explanation of this. This is a petition that was made to the zoning commission to amend the regulations to actually specifically deal with a property on Five Jalabis Road. Now, we have, our purview is not to approve or or approve or turn down any kind of zoning issues. Our purview is strictly to look at the text amendment and determine if it is in line with planning, a plan of conservation development, if it enhances plan of conservation development, or if it is not needed because we already have various regulations in our plan of conservation development that gives enhances the possibility of renovating certain areas, creating additional housing, and also having certainly look at situations that have portions of the building in, especially if it's a residence, portions of the building in a nonconforming situation, and allowed to build or work within the footprint of that building, as long as the nonconforming area is not violated further than it already is. So what we have here is a situation where this, the amendment clearly is in reference to a building that was renovated. And the entire building is in a nonconforming area. So, and again, without going into the circumstances as to why we're getting this, the state statute allows someone to to actually petition the zoning commission to change zoning regulations. In this case, it was done to specifically address the circumstances of the property on Five Jalabis Road. There are virtually no other properties in Roxbury, or if, just very few, that would ever fit into this particular category. So making this change is really not going to increase the possibility of renovating barns or increasing additional housing. It would simply really address just the circumstance. So again, our purview is not to deal with whether or not zoning should be changed. It is to deal with the language of the text amendment to determine if it is an improvement. Does it fit into the, the, the general plan of conservation development? Or is it unnecessary? And does not, it doesn't do anything for the greater benefit of our plan of conservation development or, or the, the conditions as they exist right now, based on our plan and conservation development in Roxbury. And it would not improve it in any way, shape or form, because it is just specifically addressed to this particular area. Now, this will go to, depending, no matter what we decide on this evening as to how to approve it, either to respond positively, affirmatively to the current tax amendment, or we say that it is really unnecessary because it is not something that we feel benefits Roxbury in general, or improves the current conditions. And we certainly encourage to have additional buildings done, renovations done, you know, changing barns into habitable situations, that kind of thing. And maybe do have laws in our books, regulation outbooks that will do that. But not to the extent as what we see here. And of course, once we, once zoning approves that, and just to say how it's going to work is that after we respond to zoning, regardless of how we respond, this will go to a public hearing in May, and then the determination as to whether it will be approved or not is going to be subject to the outcome of the public hearing. And, and the decision is made by the zoning commission. So there was a lengthy explanation as to what we're looking at. If anybody has any questions on that and have read that, you simply have the right to discuss it and bring your opinion, have your opinion heard as to what you feel about that.
Um, I have a question because we've gone through this several months now concerning this change. And since you say that-
I'm sorry, Deidre, you've, you've gone through this particular situation or it's on your own?
Yeah, we, we've looked at this zoning change a couple of times concerning the nonconforming barns.
No, not this one, though. This is specific, this was a petition brought to us by Anna Carter of Five Jalabis Road. And the, that barn has been renovated and has been worked on. And right now is and that's why they're bringing us this particular amendment. And this was written by the attorneys for Ms. Carter.
So then we probably shouldn't even be looking at it if we've already gone through it, right? And it has nothing to do with our POC
Now, what we had talked about in the past is, was just an amendment that was approved as far as barns are concerned. And that, that will in play, it will be in place. You probably can see this, but the amendment is only what's written and, and, and read. Do you, can you see that on your?
Yeah, I, I looked at it earlier. So the other one went through or will go through. So basically what you're saying today is you're suggesting that maybe we shouldn't even, we should kick it back and not even vote on it because it really doesn't concern us, correct?
Yeah, no, actually, I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting that we have these three options. Two options, actually. And that is that, you know, we can, we could say that, that, that looks good and it fits into our plan of conservation development. But what I feel is that, and, and I'm suggesting that only, not to influence anyone on their thinking, that what it says is it really only deals with and corrects and approves the condition of this property in itself, which, which has been already built on.
Right.
Has been renovated. And the entire building is in a nonconforming location. And it is, it sits in all the setback lines that that makes it nonconforming. So, so the bottom line to it is, what, what this would do, it would simply ratify whatever work has been done on that building. Now, it proposes a, the proposal is to make it a zoning amendment. Now, so what, what that would then do is it would apply to all other situations that would be similar. And I really can't see that it will do any good to improve our intentions of, of creating additional housing units in Roxbury by renovating and/or creating a habitable space out of nonconforming buildings or of barns. Now, keep in mind, there is a state statute that says, that recommends that all towns should attempt to bring nonconforming buildings into conformity. Now, that's something that's, that's a general trend that one should look at. But we really have done that with our regulations that we have currently have on our books. And this is just a proposal and a petition to address this one particular unique circumstance.
No, but Peter, I mean, they, there's extenuating circumstances with this particular address. I mean, because they have gone to zoning and ZDA and they, and they were denied, and then they did it anyway, right?
Although, well, again, I'm not too familiar with, and since it is a pending case of still being addressed as to what has happened and what didn't happen. And obviously, you know, we can't be blind to the fact that certain things have happened on that building that should not have happened without getting a permit. And so the, the appeal was made to get this text amendment to ratify this. Now, that does not mean that the activity that took place by the applicant and by the various commissions who had reviewed this gives them any, by going to us, and I want to make it very clear.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever we say, whatever we do, has nothing to do with this petition being approved by the zoning commission. We're simply addressing the language. And we can, we can, we can actually respond, as I said earlier, by telling, by responding that, that we feel the, 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 the current amendment has no benefit or improves our current plan of conservation development. I mean, it's unnecessary.
It does seem kind of broad. I mean, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm not reading it correctly, but it kind of, it, it sounds to me like, so basically, if you're going to improve a barn, improve, you could do whatever you want in it.
Well, not really. It has, it has certain conditions attached to it, obviously. But it's cer- it's certainly, again, the reason it reads all encompassing is because it addresses one circumstance that in fact, where these situations that they're referring to and would like to have amended already exist and have taken place. Okay, so again, it's not our purview to, to deal with any kind of a legal activity that's taking place, that may have taken place. And it guarantees nothing in terms of whether or not the zoning commission will approve this particular tax zoning amendment.
Yeah, it's my-
It has not gone to them yet. All they have received is, they haven't even, this has not even been discussed yet. So what will happen is at the May meeting, where they called a public hearing, they will then actually discuss the particular proposal on here and determine as to whether or not they will approve it. So again, that's why my feeling is that we should, you know, I can't see anything that this verbiage does to improve or to, to improve the current conditions in Roxbury to actually create more housing and call it even affordable housing, if you wish. But I think the bottom line to it is that we have all provisions made. Our accessory apartment regulations, for example, are very clear. I mean, you can have an accessory part, a, a building that is, you know, forty percent, I think it's, it's sixty percent of the square footage of your main residence. You could also have an, an additional unit within your main residence, as long as you can provide separate accessibility and so on. So, so we have really have a very flexible regulation that allows to improve and to promote this kind of situation where we, where we create additional housing units within our existing structures that we have here in Roxbury. So, again.
Hey, Peter, do you have me yet? Peter?
I'm sorry, yeah, oh, you're on, good, Bob.
Yeah, sorry, I, I've, I've had you on video, but I have not been able to get the audio going, but I have been listening the whole time.
Okay, so please, any comments, any thoughts about that, Bob? You, you, you're pretty much, you know, know what we're talking about here and the, the circumstances.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. The, yeah, I think we've done pretty well with the plan of conservation and development to you know, create circumstances, you know, favorable to the housing in Roxbury. And this particular addition that's being looked at, to me, is something that is solely being added after the fact for one person to benefit by, who has followed no regulations in town by doing what they've done. So number one, I don't think we need it. Number two, I don't, I think this is a rotten way to go about doing business in a town.
I would agree with both of you.
Totally agree with you, Bob.
And furthermore, I also felt that if this ever is approved, I mean, it leaves the door wide open that anybody can just, you know, go and do what they want to do and then come in afterwards and say, here, fill me out, you know?
I agree. I mean, if, if you let somebody, you know, add regulations to take care of their special interests, then you gotta let everybody, you know? It just, uh, just doesn't make any sense to me for zoning to do this. Not for making things better for the town, but for making things better for one individual.
Can I then suggest that what we probably should do is to respond to zoning, that we feel the, the current proposed text is not necessary and does not, does not assist or help or improve any current conditions that we have created in our plan of conservation development to, to improve and to enhance and to promote additional housing units here in Roxbury.
Uh, yes, I agree with that, but I also think it ought to be, you know, the point ought to be made to zoning too, that this is dangerous to consider additions to the zoning regulations, you know, based on one person.
Well, please, I want, I want property. I wouldn't make a reference to the property. That's what it really is. So, you know, whoever's going to own that property, you know, that's, that's what we're dealing with here, that, you know, that, we, we just can't, if we, well, anyway, we can. And it's not in our purview for zoning to either approve or turn down based on whatever the condition is going to be created in the public hearing. However, I think it's very important that we do make that point, that the last point you made, I think it should be made, I think it's dangerous to, to create a whole new zoning regulation or an addition to a zoning regulation that actually was done particularly to address a circumstance on, on one property that was not approached in the appropriate, appropriate way to get it approved.
Can I just, for point of clarification? Are they just asking for our opinion on the language for a zoning reg? This isn't a planning reg.
No, but that's what I said earlier. However, planning commission always has, any kind of zoning regulation change or any text amendment gets referred to planning, and our purview is to make sure that it ties into or improves our plan of conservation development as far as housing is concerned. Okay, so that's what we have done. And, and again, let me just point this out to you. If we respond in a somewhat negative way that we don't want it, we don't need it, it's unnecessary. Okay, now, if zoning could still approve this, however, they would need more than a maximum vote to approve it. If we, if we would do this, if we would address it affirmatively, they would, would need less of a vote to approve and lesser of what to turn it down. So it's, it, it will not stop zoning to approve this. However, it is very important that we have to recognize that zoning has not been involved with this only up to the point of the various circumstances that led up to the situation. Okay, they have not even discussed this amendment. This was written by the applicant, by the attorney who wrote this. He is, he did this on behalf of, of Anna Carter on, on Five Jalabis Road. So they will, at the next meeting, take that up and review it and make their own determination based in a public hearing and based on the results of that. So all we're doing right now is, and I'm, I'm what Bob said and what I said before, combine, combine that comment. I think that's, that is spot on. We're doing this entirely for one property. And to do this, that would really open up a can of worms and it would just not benefit anybody really, other than just this particular applicant. For that reason-
Peter, Peter, they're doing this only because the town has issued a cease and desist. And am I to understand correctly that they have not even applied for any kind of septic system yet?
Uh, well, that's what I understand. You know, it's subject to, subject to approvals, you know, that obviously, you know, that's why they haven't done that, but no.
I, I understand that, but they, they have not applied for any of the accepted permit issues that we all have to abide by in this town.
One hundred percent correct.
And, and now they want to rewrite the regulations for their circumstances that they created.
And the only thing that we have purview over is this language. And by us responding negatively, that's obviously not a great thing for the next commission to say yes or no. And chances are, they haven't even had a chance yet to determine the actual viability and, and, and benefits or negative impact on Roxbury.
Peter, is that normal where a citizen can come and suggest a regulation be rewritten and pass it by us before it even goes to zoning?
Yeah, the statute says, in fact, that they have to do it that way. If it's a petition, it goes to, it goes to, they make it to zoning.
Okay.
It's written by a third party, given to zoning. Zoning will turn it over to us for us to review it. It's only in a petition. Any other time, as we have known over the years, that's what we do, is zoning rights are regulation, zoning rights are text. They send it to us and we may come, we can, we may comment on it, as we have done many, many times. In most cases, it's affirmative because it all has gone through, it has gone through public hearings, it has gone through all the steps that are required to make a text amendment. This text amendment was purely done and was submitted by the attorneys for the applicant and was written by him. And so therefore,
Well, I would agree with you.
In my opinion, in my opinion, the response that we should give, again, is up to the commission. And I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but, but I, Bob had just mentioned, I think, would be, should be our response.
Yeah, I, I would, I would second that.
I would, I would make a motion to accept that, that wording from Bob.
Okay, you want to add mine to it, Julie? Oh, no, wait, wait, who was that? What, that was, that was, that's Chris, okay. Yeah, let's combine, let's combine Bob's and my wise words and put it into the motion. Julie, did you were able to, I'm sure you're going to be able to get that off the, the recording.
I got most of it, but I'll definitely be able to get all of it off of the, the, when I, when I play it back tomorrow.
All right. So our response should be just that, that we feel this is not necessary and the reasons that we've just given, that Bob and I have given, and everyone else agrees apparently. So do we get a consensus? Do I hear?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. All in favor? Okay.
Well, I'm, you're approving or denying?
Oh, that it's worth-
We are approving the motion.
Your motion to deny.
Okay, so you're, okay. All right. That works.
It denied that it has any value or it would not add any beneficial improvement to what we have on file.
Correct.
And that would, it would not assist the improving additional housing units for Roxbury as our plan of conservation already calls for. So anyway.
Yeah.
So Julie, you're gonna, you're gonna be able to piece that together from the, from the tapes or not, it's not tape anymore, from the recording.
I will.
Okay. All right. Is there, are there any other concerns, thoughts, discussion about this matter?
I just need a second on the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And who is my second?
Chris, Chris second it.
Okay, so I had you as making the motion, Chris.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. We're good.
All right. Well, we, I violated my rule of five minute meetings, so I apologize.
Okay. Apology accepted.
Oh, good. I'm so happy. Now I can go and eat lunch or dinner or whatever it is that, it's cooking up there at the residence. Okay, well, thank you very much for showing up tonight. I know it's, it's always good to see you. I'm looking forward to a day when I can actually see everyone in person and can talk to you.
Can I ask a quick question, Peter? I know I'm the trouble child today.
Well, go ahead, that's all right.
I received a call and I assume everybody else received a call before the last town meeting concerning the planning commission no longer being on the ballot. And then I noticed that the town voted yes for everything but that, they tabled it.
They tabled that. And I think the reason, I think the reason for that is actually, it makes good sense to table that because the planning commission is up for reelection in November.
Okay.
So let that go, let that go through, then have people reelected or people change, the election changes various members off the commission. And then at that point, it's easy to make a decision when you have four years of, of elected people in, in their various positions. It's, that's the time then to make a decision whether or not planning and zoning should be joined or not. And that's up to this, up to the board of selectmen to, to make those decisions. So that was the only reason.
Peter, I don't think that had anything to do with joining planning and zoning. The, the question, if I understood it correctly, was about the, having a voted, having the board-
Appointed, appointed various voters.
Appointed versus voted.
Same, same explanation applies.
Okay, but Peter, they, it was explained to me on the phone call that it wouldn't affect any of the current members.
Oh, but actually, the way, the way it was phrased is that in order to go from appointed to elected, we would have to resign first. Okay? The elected people had to resign. And then new people would be appointed and would be the same people that have resigned. But in, but you can't, you can't just change it in midstream and say, now we are pointing people if we have elected people in place. Okay, so the same thing would take, you know, since we have the elections coming up, and I think that was one of the reasons why they tabled it is because, you know, if, if everyone gets reelected, then, okay, so be it. If somebody is not being reelected or we have new members being on, on the commission, they would have to do the same thing. If in the first quarter, if after the November election, it's decided by the Board of Selectmen that they would propose to have planning and zoning being appointed versus having planning being elected and zoning being appointed. In, in that case, you know, we would, again, the people that were reelected in November would again have to resign. And it could be the people that are currently on or other people that may have been elected in November that are not one of us. Okay, so, or somebody may drop out and somebody else gets elected, who knows? But anyway, the bottom line is that it would be a cleaner deal to have a reelection, have the members again being reelected for a four-year term, then have them resign and be immediately reappointed in order to meet the statute of, of, in Connecticut. And that's what, how Peter Hurlwood has explained that to me.
Okay.
Lorenzo, does that answer your, does that answer your question? Lorette?
Not really, but, no, it doesn't, but-
Bob raised a question again.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't a question. It was, I, I made a comment, not a question. Um, you know, I mean, whatever, it doesn't make any sense that it is a voted on, that it has to go on the ballot, it has to have the expense and what have you, and, and the attention of the town. When at the end of the day, so for instance, I was the one who didn't make it. I ran and I wasn't on the, I, I, I wasn't elected. And I'm the one who shows up every week for this board or every month for this board. So I mean, a resume, a resume should probably be something that's considered more than a name. I mean, nobody in town knew who I was. Don't you think that the people in town who are involved with these kind of committees should have a the influence on who's on the boards and who's going to show up? Anyway, it, it's just an opinion. The influence on who's on the boards and who's going to show up. Anyway, it, it's just an opinion, but it's too, it's.
Lorenzo, honestly, there's nobody, there's nobody jumping to volunteer for these commissions. Uh, and, and I, I had to be put on the, the ballot. Um, probably, I don't know however many years ago, and I was new.
Yeah.
And I got voted on, so I, I, I think it's just people either check the box or they don't. Um, but honestly, people aren't jumping to join.
I want to make one distinction here though. Okay, may I make one distinction here?
Yeah.
Uh, when we have somebody resigning. From the board, leaving the board, and they have a remaining term. We, the members of the planning commission selects the person that will fill the remaining term. Okay, in Lorenzo's case, you, you, you ran, you just ran for, for one. There were two people that ran for, uh, your position, I believe. It was not two, it was you and somebody else that ran and ran to.
There's three, three, three peoples.
Ran the ballot.
Christine, myself and, and, uh, Mary and the so.
Okay, well, so. Uh, you know, that's a little different than, than when we select somebody resigning in midterm. Uh, and we select someone to fill the remaining term of that particular position.
Those two things have nothing to do with each other, but.
Uh, well, I, I respectfully disagree, but, uh, you know, that's, your opinion is certainly respected and, and. And recorded, but, um, you know, I, 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 let me, let me ask you this, though. What, I mean, what's the. Uh, why would that have anything to do with, uh, the, the board of selectmen deciding to table it until? And I don't even know if that's why they tabled it, but that, that could have been one of the reasons.
I, I have no idea. I, I mean.
So, so, you know.
I'm, I'm not making a motion. I'm not making anything. I just pointed out that.
Anyway. You know, that was not even on the agenda. But anyway, that, that really, I, I don't know. The answer really is, I don't know why it was tabled. I was expected was tabled because everyone is going to run again and be on the ballot for, uh, for November. That's all I can tell you.
Peter?
Yeah.
Um, the, the only thing I just want to mention is what we've talked about over in the past. Um, I still believe in the people having the say and having the, the elections for any of these positions, and I prefer for zoning also. Reason being, if you look through our past, especially on zoning, which is appointed. And has had people appointed that we are not able to get rid of and who, you know, make everybody's life a living hell. Um, you know, like, um, you know, two of the past, um, uh, zoning chairman. Um, that, uh, and no, no matter how, how much the town objects for some god awful reason, the first selection. Tend to keep these people on. Um, that's why I just as soon have the power with the people and not with the, uh, towns. Elders or.
Well.
Yeah, that's a good point, but how much does it really cost? It can't cost much. It's not like anyone really had to run. It just goes on the ballot. That's just ink.
You put your name on the ballot, that's all you have to do. It's, it's not like you.
Yeah, so what does it actually cost the town?
You're gonna have the election anyway.
Right. So it's really a bogus.
Now, Lorenzo, when you run for first selectman, uh, sometimes in the future, that'll cost you a bit.
Yeah, I don't plan on doing that anytime in this lifetime.
Yeah, and that boat has passed me a long time ago. So anyway, um.
Yeah, I, I keep saying, Lorenzo, to everybody who complains to me is run against me, please.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, Bob. There's nobody jumping up and, uh. I mean, we have more people on the commission now than I think we have in however many years that I've been on it.
We do. I think we have a good commission right now. I mean, everyone's on there. I think we, there's great input, so I'm, I'm very pleased with it. But again. You know, it is, it's, it's, it's in the hands of, of town management. I mean, you know, what they, they want to report something. You know, that will listen to it, but, you know, I've, I've never, I've always ended up, I expressed that to everyone that. Still enough, uh, long enough to listen to me, that I felt that, uh, the planning commission. Being elected is a good thing. Now, that's why most, most towns actually combine planning and zoning. Uh, that, that in itself has, um, some benefits from a, from a, uh, efficiency point of view, but it has a lot of drawbacks as well. You know, so for example, I think a situation like we just talked about with this, uh, with this zoning amendment, going. By statute, it goes to, to planning and then goes back to zoning for them to actually make a decision. Uh, you know, that wouldn't happen if you have planning and zoning combined. It would all be taken care of right there and then. You know, with a one-stop, a one-stop situation. So, anyway. Are there any more questions?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second. This is Chris.
All, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks very much for coming and, uh, bringing these interesting comments and questions to our attention. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Peter.
All right, nice to see, nice to see everybody. Hope to see you again soon. Good night.